There you go.
All right, so we will move on to. Number six, communications. Do we have any?
We don't.
Okay, then we'll move on to number six, speakers from the floor. They won't mind. All right. Number seven, or number eight, excuse me, committee and department reports and appointments, A A downtown project update.
So you should have the my latest report and then this word and status report. So I'm not sure if there's anything in particular that you want to ask about. You just want to know that Jen won't sabotage things. I don't know, you can time wisely still.
Where are we on the securing all the easements?
We are close. Um. I hope we'll be done by Friday. I think we're. Yeah, I think we're really close. We're, we've had to make a couple of changes. In the, in the design, just slight changes. To accommodate people's needs, some slight changes in easement language. But there's a little back and forth that needs to happen between lawyer and just easement corrections. And hopefully. Hopefully, fingers crossed, will be. At least have the majority of them and promise to have the others. I keep saying this Friday, this Friday, this Friday, so it's very close. We don't have like a no from anyone at this point, so that's good. We've made progress there and. Yeah, we each one that comes in, that much book. So I think there's maybe a handful left that we haven't gotten. And most of them are just, we're just waiting to get them. They're either in the mail or just checking on one thing, so.
The. The crew in the store, is that being worked out? Has that been worked out?
I'm still having conversations with them.
Okay.
They shouldn't delay us moving forward with the site certificate. We'll, we'll be able to move forward with that, so that won't delay the project. We may still need the workouts and particulars, but it shouldn't delay the site certificate.
Any idea when it will all start to happen? Two weeks, right?
That's the million dollar question.
Yeah, so, so I know once the easements are in, the lawyer just needs to, to sign a title of opinion. And they have everything prepared. So once that's done, it's basically submitting all of the documentation to the funder, who's funding that portion of the project, Economic Development Administration or E D A. They need thirty days to review it. They already have the design and they've already reviewed it. They just can't give us feedback on the design until they have the site certificate. So the engineers have everything prepared. It's all uploaded in database and the funder has access to that. Or in OneDrive, the funder has access to that. So they need thirty days to review it. As soon as they review it, the bid package and everything is all set to go. The advertisement's all set to go, so they can put it out to bid. So it'd be amazing if we could do it in June. Which, you know, the question after that is, you know, how soon after Labor Day can we start? And that depends on who's bidding on it, materials, mobilization, getting stuff out here. The first part of the project, as Pam knows, is the, the water main. So if we can do it after Labor Day, that would be the goal.
I've had it, few people ask me how everything is getting out here, if it's going to affect the boat line? Or if it's coming out separately? I know it's a ways off, but I have, I've had people ask me now because of the transfer station process.
Yep. Yeah, I don't have an answer for that. I think that contract, you know, it'll be what, you know, working out between, you know, the town and the contractor and engineer, like what seems to make the most sense with that as a consideration as well?
Yeah.
There's barging everything at once. Is that possible? We can stage materials at, you know, the net factory site in the back. And hopefully another location.
I would think those. Issues would be probably ironed out once someone's chosen, awarded the agreement.
I mean, I think we all know, it's like, there's no way to do this larger of a project without impacting our day to day goings on. But I think from the get go, even in the master planning process, it made very clear that everything needed to be done to try to minimize impact. And that included like no, no construction during the summer, meaning July and August. And no, really trying to, you know, take into account how we can minimize impact. We know it's going to be a pain in the ass. We know it's going to be a disruption. But I think we may have every intention to try to minimize that as much as possible. It's kind of like, that's the best we can do.
Millie, your hand raised.
Yeah, with the amount of material coming in, any whoever is the bid, if it is awarded to, will most likely use as much as they can on barges and on transporter. And there's also the possibility of renting like the curse and bringing that out on its own ferry boat. There's a number of ways to do it to kind of limit that.
And maybe by the time they start, we'll have a second big boat back.
Maybe.
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 Wow.
Well, if you look at the transfer station project, much of that tie up was the stone coming by truck.
Right.
Now, we could avoid that if we can get something with mills to get a crushed rock from the island relative tying up ferry time. And yeah, that would be one I would think that we'd be taking serious consideration. It'd be lower cost and less inconvenience.
That would have to go.
Yep.
Right.
But just bear it in mind.
Uh, any other questions for Gabe? Anyone? I, the transfer station, where are we on that? Is that close?
Uh, he said that the paving should start next week.
Okay.
He was supposed to contract with the island transporter to get all the hot mix over here. But I talked with David Whitney yesterday and I guess he originally talked with Dan Ford, but then Dan, Dan didn't book, book it in, and now the transporter's busy. So. It's, I mean, it's not my problem because it's supposed to be Dan Ford's responsibility to get the hot mix over here, but.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not my problem, but it is my problem, so.
So it's going to be coming all the fair.
Yeah, sounds like. All right, any other questions, anybody? All right, thank you, Gabe. Uh, we move on to seven, I'm sorry, eight, C Knox County Sheriff's report.
Did you have any questions on the Warden's Report that you're okay with that?
Um. I think we're all set. I kind of took the two together.
Okay.
Good evening. Travis again. First, I'd like to start off, this is Deputy Matt Premoney. He's the new Island Resident Deputy. Moved out last week. He's going to be the full time. Welcome. Hopefully you see him a lot more than you see me. Um, I believe all the reports are in front of you. Fifty-three calls for service for the month of April, right up until yesterday when this was printed. We did have one other one last night as well. So fifty-four. Um, I think they're all fairly self-explanatory. If you have any questions, please score free.
How does that compare to what towns and size like this on the mainland? Do you have any idea? Is that way more or?
No, we're actually, we're probably running right around the same.
Okay, I was just curious. I think they're actually Knox County, how weird.
No, and, and some of these that, that are, you know, as you see on yours.
Yeah, like nine-one-one hang up and stuff like that.
We do those, the property checks, you know, that, that we try to take on ourselves, the school, the ferry terminal, the wind farms. It's little things just to keep going. Some you'll see those public relations. We don't really pull a lot of those on the mainland. Um, these numbers, as you'll see all the different deputies that were here, I think you'll see the names change. Obviously, now that Matt's here and myself will have ninety-five percent of the calls. So hopefully the rotation's slowed down. Um, still working on the second deputy for the island. It's still in the works. Uh, right now, Matt's living in the town provided house. So that's where he is. Uh, we also did do a hunter safety course out here with the Warden Service this past month. Um, I think personally it was a big success. The wardens were pretty thrilled with it. We had twenty-seven all together.
Good.
Nice.
We are looking at it. We focused it more on the youth after the involvements in February. Um, but it was open to everybody. We actually had some younger kids that weren't old enough to get certified, but their parents sent them anyway. So I think that was a plus. Um, I have worked with the Warden Service as well about coming back in the fall to do a crossbow, bow and arrow course. Yes, this stuff can be done online, but I think it's better if we pull them out. Little hands-on and obviously speak with the pros.
Yep.
So I think that was a success and a win altogether, and, and they were pretty excited to get them all publicized.
Great.
So ramp it up for the summer. It's going to be busy, I think.
Yep.
Both sides are already starting to show their colors.
Yep.
So I know my side's. So.
Any questions?
Matt, you just started officially.
Uh, last week, yeah.
Last week, yeah.
Yep, so I put my first work weekend last week.
So what do you think so far?
Charlotte, I can tell you that much.
We're very happy.
I like it. I like it out here and uh, looking forward to getting my wife and kids up here pretty soon.
Good, good. Well, welcome.
Yes, welcome.
Thank you for long here.
Get a house somewhere.
He's gonna, we're gonna make it work in the townhouse for now and then. It'll give me a reason to stay out of the house while I'm supposed to be at work. We're at that close quarters.
Right.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a little bit different, but we still able to go to work and hide away from my family.
Well, welcome. All right. Thank you very much. You're welcome to stay, but yes, I'm sure you have pressing business. That's fine.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, all right. Seven, the housing committee.
Um, Keith McPherson is here from Home Energy Answers. He's doing energy audits and air sealing on eight homes with our grant that we got from Gorman Foundation. I guess it's called Little Zigg. He's working. So I think it's going well. You came out on Monday, so it's only, today's only the second day. But going well.
Good. Anything else? I mean, we can just lump the next two together, don't we?
I think we're on the agenda twice.
Yep. Okay, so.
The housing committee asked to be on the agenda. That's why we cleared on separately.
That was a couple of weeks ago, yeah.
Well, I mean, all right, we can move into eight, whole business resolution for vinyl even housing initiative.
Uh, so I just, I did a memo. I gave you more information. I would recommend that you, you make the motion at the bottom of this memo and sign the resolution. But certainly if you have questions about it.
This is the one that was in the email.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Instead of saying partner, it says, they changed the word partner to one extra more, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
I had asked maybe the municipal association legal department to look at it, and they had some reservations. And then I did more research and I got some information from the.
He's on Go under.
Okay, what is the name of the, the Vinyl Haven Housing Initiative attorney? And also I talked with Matt Eddie from Mid Coast Council of Governments. So I don't, at this point, I don't see any reason not to sign the resolution.
Okay.
And that's what we asked for.
Yep. Um. So the other memo about the housing committee.
Oh, yeah, well, I guess that. The housing committee was formed in March sixteenth of twenty twenty-one. And that, um, the housing committee was supposed to only last for a year. So what I was wondering is if we should have them knowing that it'll probably be another several months before the Vinyl Haven Housing Initiative, the five oh one C three takes place.
Yep.
If they should submit another forming document, just to clarify, because the, what we have now. The goals have been met. And most of the people on this list of members aren't even, you know, Cooper and Ellen are still on it. But none of the other people listed on this forming document are even on the committee.
Kathy's been on, yeah, pardon me, Sam.
Oh, you are, I'm sorry. Sorry, Kathy. Kathy and Cooper and Ellen are on this original document. So it might be a good idea to just say, you know, what's happening now with the housing committee, what the goals are and who the current members are.
Well. Assuming the goal right now is just to set up the five oh one C three and then move forward with that, correct? So, I mean, I. I don't know how people feel. I don't want to put more work on the housing committee if you don't need to do it, so.
If you just reauthorize us, then as soon as we're, and then we'll send a formal letter that we've accomplished our goals. Because we have done everything we said we would do. And then if we get the five oh one C three, it's not, you know, a slam dunk, but. If we get, if we get that, then we can disband the housing committee, or you can keep it going with other members and we'll move into the like housing initiative and be able to raise money and things, you know, after not from the town.
Yeah, I would. I would hope that it gets approved and then I would think we wouldn't need the housing committee anymore. I don't know how others feel, but.
I, I'm, I'm going to disagree with that a little bit. We, we still have this housing problem that's not going away. It's going to get worse. And this is a start, but I, I still think we need to be looking longer terms of how are we going to address it? Biden was a pretty good exercise and I suggest we all spend time reading it. They have done it. And we're, we're approaching where we're going to see people come on the boat on Monday morning and leave, and leave Friday because there are no tradesmen can afford to live out here.
What is the document that you're referring to?
The one who's going to be on the, I mean, we can, I don't know. Obviously, we can say the committee, but if there's no one to be on it, then.
Aren't they one and the same? It seems redundant to me to have two committees when they're both.
Well, one's, one is no longer a committee.
Yeah, right, but I'm saying to read. Um. You want to keep housing.
Yes, I don't think we, that the issue's still there.
But is the Vinyl Haven Housing Initiative, are their goals the same as the committee? Housing committee, I mean, it just seems like they're the same.
One of the concerns of the main municipal attorney, that there would be confusion about what the role is of the Vinyl Haven Housing Initiative, that it would be confused as a town committee.
Yeah.
That was, it was just a concern.
I mean. The five oh one C. So when we get set up, if housing committee is still needed thereafter, if people want to be on it, they can come and they can submit a new document to form a new housing committee.
Right.
I don't think there's no reason to keep one open that has no one on it. I guess it's my point.
Yeah, I'm assuming that all the people on this one, I gotta repull it into the game. New one from what I've read.
Just like, well, maybe it's not a recommendation, a suggestion of, you know, with the, with the town thinking about what your housing, do you want to focus on housing? Is it, what are those goals? And what's within the town's purview to do what, whether it's, you know, zoning or, or, you know, or ordinance, it's like, what are, what are the things within the town's purview? I'm just thinking of like North Haven, for example, they, they have a housing working group that's, that's town-based, but they also have North Haven Sustainable Housing. They work in collaboration with each other. But the town committee is really just focused on, you know, what's within the town's, the municipality's purview to influence and support. Increasing access to, to housing, whether it's workforce or year round. So it could be that, you know, you all define what, what your goals are and then a committee's purpose is to further those municipal goals.
How long does, do you think it'll take for the five oh one C three to be set up? Is it ninety days or?
It's, it's unclear. The Mid Coast Regional Housing Initiative said that there's, their application breeze through in thirty days. But that's unusual. But our, our application method is theirs, so we're hoping we'll have the same success. But to answer the question about. The, the two organizations. Um, within the planning commission, we've made a lot of recommendations and changes for the zoning ordinance in order to foster more housing. We've been working with Matt Eddie on that. And so the, that, there are a lot of changes. If the town votes for them, that will foster more housing.
That was, that was the next point I forgot. I thought the planning commission had been working on that as well, so. I think we have, we are tackling it from a couple of different angles, so again, if the housing committee needs to be brought back up.
So what I'm hearing is just to leave things the way they are for now with the, with the housing committee?
Yes, I, I think.
Can I make a motion? Are we just extend it?
But there's nobody on that committee, correct? Are these, you guys are still on the housing committee as well as the?
Well, until, yeah, when the five oh one C three is set up, I would think we would then.
I, I would maybe say we extend it for three months or until their five oh one C three.
Determination is approved or not, right?
Instead of having to resubmit this, because Alan's still the president or what is it, what is it called? Yeah, and Cooper's still secretary, I assume, and I don't know if there's a vice chair, but.
That would range out there.
Okay, I mean, I would just make that, I guess I'd make that a motion that we extended it three months or if they get the five oh one C three before that, then that will just.
Stand and tell us when it comes in reality.
Well, hopefully they get it in three months or less than three months, and then it will just be disbanded then, but.
Okay.
I don't know how.
I, I.
Which more, I mean, we can just make it till it gets approved, but then it doesn't get approved, then what do we do?
Well, even if it does, I mean, what is, but we talked about three units. Is that, is that where the goal is? Or is it to look forward to say, how do we address, what can we do?
Someone else is going to step up after these guys. They've already done their work.
No, but I'm not saying that. I'm just pointing the, this isn't the, not the answer for the future as a staff, but it's not the answer for the future. Not part of a plan for the future. It's a real issue.
Yeah.
We all know.
Which is why they, they've, they've done the work. They feel the five oh one C three is the next best step.
And the changes they made to the.
And, right, so we have to see how that goes. And then, yes, I'm, there's going to be more work that has to be done, of course.
It would be helpful if we had minutes from the meetings. Help us better understand what you, could you, do you have heat minutes that could you, you know? And maybe not, but to me it would be helpful to know what goes on at your meetings and. Well, they're also going to come to us monthly and do a report, so.
We've submitted reports to you, detailed reports of what we've accomplished and what we've done. And I've come to selectmen's meetings and made reports, so they're in, in the town minutes.
I'm going to come back to, Jake made a motion. I will second it. All those in favor?
Did you get that motion? You make, I'm sorry, can somebody make the motion for the resolution?
Are you going to read it down or don't we do? Uh, yes, all right. I would make a motion to approve and sign the resolution as presented to recognize the Vinyl Haven Housing, Housing Initiative as an essential facilitator and meeting the community's responsibility to create opportunities for permanently affordable and workforce housing. And that Vinyl Haven Housing Initiative will develop this housing on island of Vinyl Haven at permanently affordable rates using subsidies from government charitable donations and other resources. Second, all those in favor? Vander, your hand up.
No, I was.
Oh, okay. I saw some movements. Um, do we have a copy that we're supposed to sign or?
Well, I'm looking at it. It just says.
Oh, so they just need it?
I'm sorry. It just says at the bottom, approved and the date. Uh, and I can have the town sort it through that and just put a seal on it.
That'd be great. I've done it to be a turn.
Okay.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Do you know when the planning commission's planning on having their stuff wrapped up to, is it going to be maybe a vote in November? Hopefully.
Or even sooner, maybe. I don't know.
Oh, we'd have to have it.
We've had our last meeting with that.
Matt is working on the draft, if you will, that will come to you to decide.
We want to go.
What's going to go, yeah, what's going to go to a vote. Um, so we're working on that draft.
When is election then? Then, what is it?
No, I, we have to have, we have to have at least two public hearings and.
Right now, because I, they were saying they're hoping to get it in before then, but I don't think it would be possible to get it.
Who said that?
Ellen, I said, we'll be ready for November, and they said, well, maybe it'd be ready before that, so. Probably won't be until November when we can vote on it, I'm assuming.
It would be a good goal.
All right.
You know, you never know what's going to happen at the public hearings, and if the public hearings, there's a decision to make even more amendments.
Right, then you have to go back and.
Yeah, it just.
So Matt has them, and we can expect them at some point this calendar year, I would think. Well, actually, that calendar year is almost over.
Pretty much done.
That's what he said. So I'm confused. So the process, if it goes to the selectment first and then we have the public hearing? Or do we have the public hearing first and come up with a final document for the selectment? I hadn't heard about it going to the selectment first.
Um, I'd have to look, there's a very specific process for adopting a new land use ordinance.
Okay.
So let me just check it.
Yeah, and Matt.
So that.
Um, I remember you looked something up at a planning commission meeting and the, the planning commission was responsible for having the.
For having the hearing.
Yeah.
But I just, the stuff that I'm not a hundred percent sure of is, does it come to the selectmen and then we schedule the public hearings? Or is it just something that goes from planning commission to public hearing? I just, I need to check that, because it's a very specific process.
Thank you for being so thorough.
Anything else? From the housing committee? No, all right. Thank you very much.
That's on you.
Thanks.
Um, the old business, the tax map update, C A I Technologies.
So I've given you some information on the C A I Technologies. As you know, our tax maps need to desperately to be updated. They haven't been updated until twenty, since twenty fourteen. So when we got, we first got this estimate from C A I Technologies, it's over a three-year period. It's two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred. We were just stunned. Um, and the more research that Travis and I did, um, we just kept coming back to the same company. We, for instance, as I said here, I talked to Tammy Brown in North Haven. They contracted with this company in twenty fourteen and took delivery in twenty sixteen, and they're very happy uh, with both working with C A I and with the product that they got. C A I also has done Rockland, Camden, Rockport, Warren and North, North Haven among other ones. And then we, Travis, um, and I spoke with Latisha Van Veren. She's the Knox County Emergency Management. She works for Knox County Emergency Management and she does their G I S mapping. And she also said a lot of good things about this company. Uh, and then we also went to the extent of getting another estimate from a company called Aerial Surgery and Photo. Um, we had contacted other companies, but other companies didn't even, they didn't want to come out here. They didn't want to, um, would, they didn't want to deal with working on the island. Um, so this other company gave us an estimate of two hundred and seventy thousand, which was slightly more. So I guess the, the point I'm trying to make is that we kept coming back around to the same company that we had originally talked to, and he came out here once and spoke to us about his product. So, I mean, you can certainly ask as many questions as you want, and I'll try to answer. But what I'm asking is to put an article in the, um, in the warrant for, um, June. To get started on the project and to use our, um, ARPA funds, our coronavirus, coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds, they're called ARPA funds. We have a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars.
Yep.
And that would fund at least the beginnings of the project.
Okay. Vander.
Um, speaking on behalf of the current lending board and probably on behalf of future planning boards decades down the line, uh, having seen what this company does, it would be very valuable. It would be very valuable for the planning board to have that, if the town had that information available.
Okay. Good to know, um.
Did Travis say that they can give us its demonstration of exactly what they do, or did he say he gave you guys on or?
He, um. What's his name, Aaron said that he would more, he'd be happy to come out and talk with you, yes.
I mean, I wouldn't mind taking a look at it.
So. Have about a hundred and fifty K difference. Are we gonna have to put that in the budget for next fiscal year, is it something that will be?
Yeah.
Next budget, so, okay, so it would be.
So, part of this article is to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a multi-year contract. I mean, I certainly don't want to start the process with C A I and then. Not have the money to continue.
Yep. Okay. Um.
So this is just asking for another warrant article?
Yeah.
That's what this motion is going.
I'd like to put this in this warrant for the June, but if you want to meet with him before we do that, I can understand.
I mean, I think.
I think we should do it, yeah.
Meet with him, and we could, if we don't like what we see, we can always recommend that it gets voted down with the town budget.
Okay.
I mean, I don't want to hold things up, it'd be as good as everyone says, but I would just personally like to see what he's offering and. I mean, Banner says he thinks too, I just haven't seen what it is, I don't know, I mean, I have an idea, but I'd just like to see.
You could go to any one of these towns' websites and look, or just North Haven. It's on North Haven's website. I think there's a link to um their mapping program.
Wait, um. We will have two more meetings until the town meeting, so we'd have to be in one of those unless we're gonna meet separately, but. I mean, I'm fine if he wants to come out and do a demonstration, but I'm gonna make the motion to um. See if the town will vote to appro, uh, sorry, to motion to place the following article in the annual town meeting warrant, and. Article reads to see if the town will vote to appropriate the balance. Hundred and twenty thousand nine hundred fifty-two dollars and sixty-five cents. As of March three first two thousand twenty-three of the coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds, AKA. AKA American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funds. Received by the town from the federal government for updating the tax maps and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a multi-year contract for this service.
Second.
All those in favor? But Jake, do you, you do want?
I think I should.
Yeah.
I mean, why, he could probably just do a Zoom with them, eh?
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't have physically.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Because it's so hard to get people to come.
I mean, everything's on the computer, I'm assuming that he, yeah, he could probably just do a Zoom, I don't need to see him.
I'll talk to him and see what he wants to do.
It'd be nice to know what we're getting into.
Alright, I'd just like to talk to him and.
But if he'd like to come out on the twenty-third, as a for instance, you wouldn't be opposed to that?
Yeah. That would be fine, too.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Or whatever, whatever. Sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, thank you, thank you very much for recognizing me, I'm Andrea Hogan. Uh, I work for Vinyl Haven Land Trust, we use this um technology all day, every day. Quite literally, um, our town is currently really um out of date. And it needs this update, so I thank you very much for for considering and passing this resolution. My question, though, that might want to be asked going down the road is, once it's brought up to date. Um, is there some way to keep it up to date? Can this company engage with us and maybe make it cheaper and become part of our budgetary considerations going down the line? Um, because, like I said, it is, it's really important.
Yeah, Travis and I asked that question, it's a five thousand dollar a year fee.
Yeah, I, I kind of, I kind of thought that this is, it's a big upfront cost, and then the maintenance fee.
Right.
A lot less, obviously, we can't keep paying three hundred thousand dollars.
We used to spend, you know, in the two thousands, when I was here before, we used to spend two or three thousand dollars. To keep the maps updated every year.
Yeah.
So for, when I heard five, I wasn't that shocked, but anyway. It seemed like a reasonable amount.
Yes.
The state doesn't do the area.
They do, but they uh haven't done one for a while, and uh everybody that I talked to, Letitia. And Aaron said that they didn't really know when the state was planning on doing it, doing it again, and I don't think. You know, if if we weren't that far out from having good tax maps, I would say, well, let's wait till the state does it, but I, there's nothing. In their plan, there's nothing funded in the state. So I just, I I really feel like we need to move forward.
And we haven't done it since twenty fourteen, so yeah, you're coming up on ten years, so.
I mean, it will be a big change and a big project, but I. From all of our discussions that we've had with everyone, it just, we just kept coming back around to the same company.
Yeah. Any other questions, comments? To move on to eight. That's our nine C. Is there anything else on that? Sorry, I didn't catch you off. Marjorie.
Eight, because we moved.
We moved it. So that one thirteen to. To six, so everything got bumped down one, so that's why we're on. It's okay.
We switched it out when you weren't looking.
Nine C Net Factory Site Reuse Committee.
Um, this is just an update, you know, I've just started thinking about it and started. Uh, working on a forming document and talking to people about what this committee is gonna look like. Uh, I would like it to coordinate the um this committee, I think it's gonna be very important, and um. She would have more time in September, and I think it should just be, I. You know, fairly short-lived, uh, maybe a three-month process, is that what we decided?
You start in the fall and just end in like May.
Okay, yeah. Uh, so I am working on it, I know there's some pressure to form this committee and get, uh, but. Personally, I just don't think that we're there yet, and I don't really think we need to rush with it. We've got the downtown project construction that will be going on. Also had been, have been talking with Matt Eddie about a possible Brownsfield. Uh, grant funding to check on the soils there, because any project that we have. Um, will probably um. Mandate that we, because it's been a public garage and a private garage, the soils are probably contaminated there.
Yeah.
So it's something that um I could at least work on getting that money and, you know, getting a timeline for that, but. As far as getting the committee formed, and you know, I'm working on it, but I'm just, I'm not there yet, and um. Certainly something that's on my radar.
And if they're gonna be storing um. Materials there for the downtown project, you're not gonna be able to really do anything anyway, because it's gonna be. Jam-packed with.
I don't mean to make light of it, I think it's a very important process, um, as I've stated before, it's in the master plan, we form this committee. For the community to decide what they'd like to do with this piece of property. Of course, now the swap shop is um taking up residence there, and people love that, so um. I just wanted to give you an update and tell you that I am working on it.
Any questions, comments from anyone? Ellen?
Um, I know that there's a committee thing formed, it's gonna be a long process, but to Don's point. There's gonna be a lot of housing needed, and um thankless is the only organization that's still building housing. In communities, and they're still interested in building out here, they could have an acre of land where there's town water and sewer. And they would like to invite anyone who'd like to come on a Sunday to their um housing project in Bangor. To have a tour and see what they build and talk to them and see what they offer in terms of social services and. Rent levels and and different things, and I think it'd be, I think that housing group really wants to go and see and. Get a firsthand, you know, view, you know, who they are and what they do and talk to some of the residents. And so it'll be on a Sunday, so people who are fishing and working could could attend as well. So we'll get a date and we'll let you know when it is, and if you could come, that'd be great.
Alright. Now we're on to ten, new business, uh, ten. A Personnel Policy, June nineteenth holiday.
It's not holiday.
Two D.
June teen.
June teen.
Oh, sorry.
It was daydreaming.
Uh-uh, of June teen. I'm taking a holiday.
So. This is something that's been coming up on the uh Town Manager's List serve, and uh all, most of the towns that have. Stated their position are saying that they're adding this federal holiday to their list of holidays for their employees to have off. If we're gonna, last year, we kind of. We didn't know what we were doing, so we um, we closed the town office and made it another holiday. But we were, you know, I think that the selectmen need to make a decision about whether we're gonna add it to our list of. Uh, holidays, if we're gonna um. Give it as a, another paid um. Federal holiday, you know, what we're gonna do with it. And certainly, if you want more information, or you want me to. Come back with, you know.
So we don't have to? Are you gonna hold it a federal holiday? I'm just assuming we had to.
No. I mean.
Does anyone feel one way or the other, I mean, I I know I. My company gives me the day off.
My company gives me the day off.
I'm not opposed to granting it to our employees as well.
What did you say, I'm sorry?
I I, my company gives me June nineteenth off, I'm not, I'm not opposed to giving our employees the June nineteenth off as well.
My company does a little.
My boss is an asshole, he doesn't. Mine doesn't like it either.
Uh, I hear it. We're just, just be a motion to add it to the um Personnel Policy, uh. Paid holidays list.
I make a motion.
Is this one of the holidays that if it's on nineteenth on a weekend, you get Monday off?
It is on Mondays, isn't it?
Not every year, though, some years it's not, so. That's typically.
It's a floating holiday.
Typically, you take the next rise and stay off, yes.
So if it's on a Saturday, you get a Friday, if it's on a Sunday, you get a Monday.
Well, that that would kind of be up to the town to decide, is that what it said here? Sorry, there you go, there you go. Uh-huh, I make a motion, we add June nineteenth as a. Um. Part of the holidays and paid leave, the personnel policy.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed?
I think they should get it off, if it's on the weekends.
Yeah.
I agree.
But if it's Christmas Day or Sunday, they don't get that off. On a Monday.
Mm-hmm. They get the day off, Thanksgiving, too.
I see that, but I didn't vote for that, I would vote for it if I could, so.
Alright.
Holidays the holiday, the next day after is a holiday.
We'll move on.
I see why you don't like your boss. You had to get along with. Oh, he's.
Pass or did it not?
It did. Uh, nine B. Dissolution of Downtown Revitalization Committee.
So, we're trying to uh go through all the committees and we're. The list usually goes in the annual report that we print. Um, this committee hasn't met for a long time, and I said, it culminated, as I understand it, in. The downtown master plan, so it it would seem like it would be logical to dissolve it.
So we should have done this like three years ago, then?
It was formed in twenty fifteen.
And they, they gave us their report like three years ago.
Right. I think.
So they haven't done any, that was the end of it? There's nothing else from there?
Well, there's certainly work to be done, but I. I think as part of, uh, you know, new strategic plans and new forming new groups would have, that have different goals. The way I look at it.
And wasn't the downtown project originally called? The downtown.
Downtown Master Plan?
The, the project itself, was it?
Revitalization.
Revitalization. And every.
This was the committee.
The committee, right, but was that, wasn't that the original name of the project?
I don't know.
Yeah, anyway, we all thought it was too hard to pronounce the words, so.
We changed the name, actually, of the committee, we took out revitalization, because it sounded like. Um, we thought there was something wrong, you know, we were trying to fix it, and that just seemed derogatory. So we just called it the Downtown Committee.
Yeah.
So you need a motion?
Not here, because she was in charge of that.
I make a motion that we dissolve the downtown. Is it still called the Revitalization Committee or?
That's what it is on here.
Okay, I make a mo- motion, we dissolve the Downtown Revitalization Committee as a plan.
All those in favor?
Do you want to ask about the broadband committee?
Oh, yeah, we did, I don't have it on the agenda, but um.
While we're developing.
Yeah, we asked Abe about the.
Yep.
Broadband. Uh, let's see, what did she say?
Hmm.
It's valid, but we'd get cheaper.
Yeah, mine doesn't work, so.
Oh, no.
Piece of crap.
The last notes that we have is that the, the board wanted Andy to pursue an RFP. To partner with an existing provider to have them expand or build a fiber network on the island, this was a long time ago.
Yeah, I mean, the, the committee hasn't met for years, so I.
No.
I moved, we dissolved the Fox Island Broadband Task Force.
Second.
All those in favor? Nobody wants to pass in it anyway, so. Nine C, sign. Annual town warrant as well as, what's the other one again?
Well, one of those is the election warrant. The town election.
Town election warrant.
And then the um school district meeting warrants.
Okay.
There's ten of the district meeting warrants.
And everyone's supposed to sign in the same place on all ten, correct?
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's what we're always done.
Right, alright, so I make the motion, we sign all the documents. Second, all those in paper. Alright.
Hi, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I missed that most of the second most.
I second it.
Who has the motion?
Uh, Jake.
Okay.
That's the end.
Want to give it to Jake? We'll go around, okay.
You don't have to figure out what to sign that one, the name's printed beside it.
Yeah, I see that, thanks Jake.
I know, I've got them all confused now.
What did you expect, it's us. We do it to you every time, thank you. Okay.
Alright, who wants to sign next?
Here are the. Does it matter?
You have to sign in the same place.
Same place on all of them.
Alright.
You can pick whichever one you want.
And the district meeting is next. Elizabeth, the district meeting is the sixteen, the school district meeting is the sixteen.
So next Tuesday.
It's an exciting evening.
That no one shows up to.
What is that?
The school district budget meeting.
That sounds exciting.
If you want to, if you want to get the town school budget changed, that's your only chance, isn't it, basically? That one should be a priority.
That should.
Half the budget.
Or more than half.
That wasn't quite half. When I looked at the thing, it was forty-five percent, right?
Well, I thought it was more than that.
My dream is the document that's on. The, uh, the school, the school appropriation that was forty-five point eight five percent. We'll take for you.
Yes, it was, that's.
If that's still correct, I assume it is.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's the school budget.
I knew it was just about, that was just on the fifty.
The nine, right? Or ten?
Ten.
Should be ten.
Yeah, that was ten.
I'll take it back. There is the fifty-one. I was, had two pages stuck together. Right on, it's nice.
Have you heard anything about the state changing the way they're gonna fund the schools or not? You know, there was a bunch of towns, like Jones Court and those that were. Weren't happy with the way that the funding for the schools is going and they were having a bunch of, uh. Trying to update the, because the Jones Court's kind of in the same case where, yeah, they got a lot of summer residents that pay higher, you know, have a lot of houses, but then the. Median incomes, you know, pretty low, so they were talking about. Changing the formula because we get, they get screwed just like we do and Ranger Lane in a bunch of places, so.
I'm not really up on it, to tell you the truth. I used to be much more involved with the legislature and the bills that were going through. I know that they. Talk about changing the formula frequently, but I don't know.
Well, when you see that they fund fifty-five percent of the school budgets and you get a hundred thousand dollars out of the state, that's a little bit of a slap in the face, so.
Right.
They have a very high assessment of very high. Uh, household income.
Well, I know how it's formulated, but it's still.
That's the problem.
When they pay eighty-five or ninety percent of Lewiston Auburns and Portland's budgets from their hundred and fifty million dollar school budgets and we get. They get a hundred million dollars and we get two hundred thousand.
Doesn't seem right.
They should at least pay for what. They make us do with all the, they should pay for special ed and everything that's mandated on us is where I feel, but.
Special ed alone would be worth it.
That's a million bucks almost.
Yeah.
But those are mandated things that you have to provide, so I mean.
Is that mandated s- state or federally or both?
Some is one, some is the other, but the only money we get from the federal government is for Title One. Nothing that else that they federally mandates. We get screwed. And even if we got twenty-five percent, that would be one more million dollars that we wouldn't have to pay in property taxes every year that we could use to. pave roads or do anything else.
We need our roads are fine.
But when you get a, when you see it's, oh. They're saying they're finally doing the fifty-five percent that the state put it on, and then you look at our school budgets. Thirty percent, two percent. But they were talking about changing the formula. I don't know, we wouldn't get fifty-five percent. Even if we got.
We got twenty-five percent.
They were talking about setting up like a minimum threshold, you know, because Falmouth doesn't get. Anything and their school's almost as big as Portland and sort of lots to come out of there. Property taxes, but then, then you go up through Portland and they get. Seventy-five percent of their school budget.
Alright.
Have enough money or whatever.
Move on to eleven budget final review and tax rate.
Um, I don't know how much time you've had to, uh, look at this. So what we were talking about at the last meeting is the use of fund balance and how much fund balance you wanted to use. I gave you two calculation forms that estimate. What the tax rate might be. Of course, there's still a lot of contingencies. With the, the values that I'm using are last year's values. I don't have the new values from the accessory act. Um, of course, the municipal appropriation will depend on town meeting, the county taxes set. Uh, the school budget. Likely to pass, uh, that's set. Uh, I know what main municipal revenue sharing is going to be. Um, so the contingencies are how much do you want to use in fund balance? So this one sheet that where the tax rate comes out to be twelve point five five. You can see I'm using a lower amount of revenues and that's where the fund balance is, the one million, two twenty-nine, three forty-seven. The other one where the tax rate came out to be twelve point one four, I'm using another two hundred and fifty thousand in, in fund balance. So. If you look at maybe increments of two hundred and fifty thousand in terms of how much of our undesigned fund balance you want to use. To adjust the taxation, that's, um, that's the fluctuation.
So it's roughly forty percent, forty cents?
Or it is. What's the middle rate now?
Huh?
Eleven point seven one.
Seven one.
So, I mean. The, the valuation's gonna be higher than six oh four, is that you're telling us?
Yes, and that will lower the tax rate.
But what if we just kept it at twelve fourteen and then just. Put the difference out of.
These are all estimates.
Okay.
I mean, so.
That's what it would be if. Everything came out tru- true on the sheet. Which we don't, we know it won't because.
But then if you just kept that at the same rate, you just use less fund balance. Or you built the fund balance up is all I'm saying.
Yeah.
Right, so I don't know if you had a chance to read the memo.
That's what I was thinking.
Go ahead, Margaret.
Um, I don't know how much you've had a chance to read or study. Um, our undesigned fund balance. The last audit that we had is, uh, June thirty of twenty twenty-one and the fund balance was three million. Uh, five hundred thousand, which to me, you know. My expertise is in governmental finance. I used to be a governmental finance. Manager, governmental audit manager. So. I mean, there's a lot of discussion about what a fund balance should be and how much you should keep on hand, but. Looking at this amount of money. I mean, final haven is golden. I mean, it's a lot. It's a lot of money. To have on hand and certainly a municipality is not in the business of making money. I just, I feel like if you wanted to keep taxation down a little bit, that you, you. Could use anywhere between five hundred thousand and seven hundred and twelve thousand. Um, without hurting you financially. I guess it, you know, from my opinion. That's, you know, what you could do safely. If you don't want to use that much, it's certainly up to you. Um, but that's what I'm looking at. A, a lot of people say. You know, fifty percent of your, uh, net assessment for commitment is a very conservative. Um, idea of how much fund balance you should have and that would be through the three million, five hundred thousand. Again, that's a very conservative amount and I've never seen it. I've never saw, seen a town achieve that in my, all of my years of auditing. Any municipality.
Did you have something about three months to on there?
Okay, and then there's a lot of people use three months average expenses, expense expenditure, sorry, which would be about two million, three. I, and anyway, you look at it, the money that we have in it is the so-called surplus or undesigned fund balance. Is very, very good. I guess I just, I'm just trying to say that if you want to use. Seven, you know, seven hundred thousand dollars in the budget to keep the taxes a little lower. I don't think it would be a problem in my opinion. But certainly if you want the taxes. Want to keep that money for some reason, if you're feeling like, you know, with the, um. The projects that we have coming up that you'd like to have that cushion, I understand that. There's a lot of different opinions about how much to have.
Billy?
I was just curious if we can use some of that money for paving roads.
We're gonna have to use some of it eventually, yeah.
I mean, I, I would like to get a. Opportunity to put some, a bit out that have at least around the Isle Road. I mean, a half of it would probably, well. A little over half.
Yeah.
Would be about a million.
Yeah.
And then we, we still, I mean, I, I checked roads, we have fifteen miles of road that really could use it, which I figured we can do. For much per year. But that might be a good way to. Spend that down, A, and B. Get the, uh, get the roundhouse side of it.
So. How do people feel about using some or more fund balance or what this year is? Certainly. Taxpayers would probably like to see their, our tax bill go. Up less than had in the past.
I like this number, the sheet, the sheet, because we still. Uh, probably gonna see another bump on the property values out here, which. This number should be, uh. Take it, we take that fund down, down a little bit, but the increased revenue because of the valuation should offset quite a bit of it. So I vote for the bill, so. One. Four.
Twelve one four.
Yeah. But also I would look at it too.
So what fund balance number did you use to get to that calculation? Was that the seven twelve?
Yes.
So your suggestion is we use the seven hundred and twelve five?
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion, questions?
Can we just say, just leave a mill rate at twelve fourteen and then when the assessment comes in, we could just use less fund balance or can you not say that?
That's what I would look at.
Well. It's not as, um. A reasonable motion to make saying we want the. Mill rate to be twelve point one four. There are so many variables. Uh, that, that are gonna come in after town meeting.
Yep.
Uh, and the values will be different. I'm never gonna be able to come up with the, with these exact amounts. Um, you could say something like, you know, we'd like. To have it be around twelve, you know, although. Um, these are, I, I just want to stress that these are just estimates.
Yes, that's. That's what I was trying to get at. We have to pick a number of what we're gonna use from the fund balance. We, I understand you want to keep the mill rated a certain number, but we can't.
We use that fun, that fun rate to get to achieve this number without having more information.
This is the most information we have at this time. There, there are factors in here, variables that will change, that will change the rate no matter what, but we won't have that information until after the end.
So go ahead with the, with the fund balance that, that dropped, that she used to derive this rate and go there.
Okay, so.
Is it seven hundred thousand?
Seven hundred and twelve, five hundred.
Why don't we just call it seven hundred thousand?
Fair enough.
Um.
Would that be?
The, the amount that I'm using is based on the articles that are gonna be it for town meeting.
I just, they're not that easy, just to make it an even number.
So it's, um. It doesn't have to be that amount, but that's, uh, the amount that. Uh, I'm, we're proposing to set aside for our capital, um, capital reserves.
Oh, I'll check too.
And plus, we don't have the audited amount for twenty-two yet, correct? And you said it.
Well, I'm estimating.
Right.
Um. Based on the figures in the trial balances that I have, that it's, uh, three million nine or.
Yep.
Almost four.
Right, so we'll still be most likely over three million, even if we use the seven twelve five.
Yeah.
So, alright, I make a, do you need a motion on it?
Wouldn't hurt.
I'll make a motion that we use the seven hundred twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. As, uh, from our fund balance for this year's budget.
Second. All those in favor? Okay. And that's. So that's it. On the budget, right? I think those are the last pieces we had, that we all set. Now.
Well, I went through and changed the, uh, fuel prices for Dawn.
They were all over the place.
To make them, the fuel oil.
What did you guys use? Four?
Oh, I just want one number to be used for all the departments.
There were different figures based on whether it was K one, fuel, diesel, you know, but, uh, I. Think what Don was saying in terms of heating oil, the fuel. There were two. I had five seventy-five on one budget, five fifty on another and four fifty.
And you went with the highest one, right?
Consistent.
You went with the highest one.
I went with the, um, talking with Shelby, uh, that works for, uh, vinyl energy with, um. What they recommended. So, I mean, it's hard to say, it's hard to say. I, I use for fuel oil, I use the four fifty.
Four fifty, okay, so.
And that was higher than what we're currently paying.
Yeah.
But I can, you know, I can go back and change it again.
Have the number be the same.
No, no.
Through all departments.
I think that's fine.
That was a.
So this warrant will change in terms of the public works budget. Um, and anything else. I don't know if you had a chance to go through that.
Then you're gonna add article fifty-two, the one that we just voted for.
Right, I'm gonna add the article about the tax map and I'm gonna be amending the public works budget. Um, at some point, we do need to get this warrant signed. I don't know, to entertain making a motion to. Approve it. With the addition of the tax map article and amending the public works budget.
I'll be talking about. And then just come up and sign it in bottom this week, or would you have it?
Can sign the back page and then we'll just run this.
But you can have an article on the top of that page? Right, or not?
I think you can fit them there, bang.
So.
Come on the bottom.
That's fine. I make.
Yeah, and then if we have to have them come back in, we can, but I don't have a problem with it signing it tonight if they're amenable to it.
Yeah, I make a motion that we sign the town meeting warrant with, uh, amended. Public works. Budget and the addition of article fifty-two with our pro funds. Is that good?
Second.
Second, yeah.
All those in favor?
And the other thing that I mentioned previously about the paving is that. In previous years, you had a, the town had approved at town meeting. Using or borrowing seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for paving, but you only borrowed two hundred and sixty-four. So there's still that hanging out there that's still available to borrow for paving, the four hundred.
That was because we, we didn't get the trucks, the ferry boat broke down and the transporter was going somewhere else. When they came out, the state came out to pave. And we were gonna get like. And, and we were, they were supposed to pay from the oak bottle to the dump and they didn't get like twenty-five trucks or whatever that money, that's why we didn't end up using it.
All I'm trying to say is that the town is, that. The town still has that approval that you can act on. It does, you know. I suppose after fifty years, you, you probably couldn't act on it, but, um. You don't lose that authority.
Right, we can still use that if we wanted to do something this year.
I, I would like to try, but I'm assuming you have to put it out with a bid.
Yeah.
I mean, I think there's only, only two companies now that have. Um, their own plant that, um, can be transported.
Yep.
Um. And I could also talk to Billy to see if he's gonna be willing to. Do the sand for it.
Okay.
To help save on that if. And get whoever bids on it in touch with, with him as well. To add that, you know, to try to maybe win it down.
Okay. Okay.
I would, that's what I was just.
Certainly, we, we have a year to pay it, but it might be something. Get something done by November and then.
Yeah, I mean, it could be lined up for later in the year, early fall or something like that.
My hot mix is just the temperature. I mean, I don't know if they, that's somebody testing the hot mix when it comes out and lay it down on it.
The state did.
You did?
Well, that's why Andy said I didn't make the guy, but supposedly they did. I don't know where he took the temperature. It was.
In Rockford.
Oh, yeah, I wasn't sure. I thought he was, I thought he was out here, so.
Hmm.
Because we had all that trouble with the dog sound road when they laid it down, it was too cold in the fall. So I thought when the state came out.
Thank you.
Was it two or three years ago?
You're not so, I'm starting with the dump. It's a small area with, I mean, it's not a lot of traffic, but it's slowing back. But I would be, I would definitely want. That tested before it lays down on the other round now, which. The base, so that's bad enough as it is without.
Wouldn't they have to work on the base before they can even put anything down?
I thought part of that road's meant to be reclaimed, right?
I mean, there's two ways to go. You can, I I think it's gonna cost. A lot of money to actually um. Uh, mill that up and then fix the base because there's a lot of rocks, ledges in there. Um, and I think it's gonna be. Extremely expensive. I mean, should it be done? Yes, that's the way it should be done at the last. Um, can the town afford to do what we're looking at or or doing that, and how would you get to the dump, et cetera, et cetera?
This is nice.
Yeah, I mean, you know, and you can reclaim it. Um, or you can do an inch and a half overlay or an inch and a quarter overlay. And use what's there now that's not broken up, take places that are broken up, still have to be milled out. But if you've got a. A decent base on the existing asphalt there, you can use that as a base.
Right, you know, I wouldn't think you need to reclaim the whole road, but but up by. Up up by the swampy part where it's real bad, you would reclaim.
Have to reclaim that.
Thousand feet or something like that, yeah.
But the, I mean, my suggestion would be. To just overlay what you can, but do it with enough that, I mean, the last time they were out here, I think they laid a quarter or two and a half an inch. And I mean.
I thought it was supposed to be five eights.
Still, you know, still not.
It's already broken up.
Huh?
Still, it's already broken up.
Inch, inch and a quarter, an inch and a half to make it.
Really work.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um. Move on to report of town manager.
I just have a couple of things, um, as part of the uh transfer system project, um. I'm gonna put in a, we are gonna put in a new security system. I'm hoping to just pay for it. Out of um operating funds. There's. A bit left in uh the transfer station equipment, equipment repair and supply lines. And that budget's only still only at um about seventy percent. So I'm hoping just it's, the total of that is gonna be sixty seven hundred dollars. But the um, the old system wasn't that good, so.
Okay.
Um, that's in the works. Um. Also, I had somebody come to me, uh Nile Conlin about uh discontinuing. His, the road that he lives on called Sadler's Way through a presumption of abandonment process. I just didn't wanna start the process um. If you wouldn't be approving it.
What did he ask for again? Did you repeat that?
He wants us to give him the road so they commit him in love.
So it's, I did look it up, but it is a town road. I don't know why it was ever accepted as a town road.
Didn't he ask to take it all? No, he's, he said that. He talked to Carl and Carl remembered putting a colored in there like twenty nine years ago.
Twenty nine years ago.
One, you know, one um. Event of repair on a road doesn't make it.
The town road.
Yeah.
Oh, well, we weren't, we were led to believe that that made of the town road.
No.
That's why we.
Yeah.
I mean, I can, I can give you the guidance on um. The presumption of abandonment, but I just didn't wanna start in on it if. The selectmen weren't.
There was, there was more than one road we were talking about at one point about. Taking off the town road.
Yeah.
There's a couple other ones that were all just.
I would like to go through the town roads and see which ones we could. Take off the lift because they're not. Please do, please do.
Said I would love to give you input on.
Cause there's one somewhere else that there's only like two houses on that road. I can't remember now.
Balls road.
That's a town road.
Well, I'm just gonna start the thirty day process if that's okay.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Not Chet and Cheryl's.
Right, the next one. I'm trying to think.
Ed Deans.
Yeah, that's town road, right?
We don't touch Deans.
Well, I thought I remember.
We do do Shane and Penny, Pennyway, Penny Lee.
For some reason, I thought one of those.
It was.
Was a town road that we were gonna talk about.
Yeah.
Abandoning.
We've done a thing with. But I've been.
No, I think it was crying, yeah.
Margaret, anything?
I'm also gonna have some gutters put on before we continue the uh fiber, finishing the fibers on that side of the building. Um, I think I've already reported that when we opened that up, there was quite a bit of rock.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it seemed clear that we need to get the water off of the building before we put any, anything new on there.
Mm-hmm.
I, you know, we don't have enough money to continue around, but that's, you know, the goal is to continue around the building. I'm using up money that's in the operating budget and in the reserve funds. Um, anyway. Uh. I don't know if you have any questions about them?
Nope. Anything else?
Uh, I don't have anything else.
Okay. Report of members.
I have one thing that. Got brought up to me. Question was about priorities on the ferry boat and why the town's been giving them for the gravel dump truck. When all the other.
What gravel?
Mecklen truck that was coming on the boat today, for example, I was on, and they had.
No, that's none.
So they wanted to know why, why they had it, the priority, I guess, when all the other dump trucks. Don't get one forward and. All the other dump trucks, you know, that are coming out. What, what, what makes it?
Or doesn't.
Town gravel.
Then on gravel.
Okay, so they get priority for that?
The town, town should.
I mean, if they're, if Mecklen's hauling it for, I don't know, I'm just gonna throw out like Lyndon Barron's project, he doesn't get a priority. We're bringing over some stock to stockpile some gravel.
Right now, we're going through as fast as we can use it in the springtime.
Okay, I guess, I guess the question was, why couldn't an island person use their dump truck to go get? It was someone that has a business out here that's competing against them, and they were just wondering why, I guess, why they get it? Why, why we're buying the dirt from Mecklen's if they're bringing it from the mainland and not buying?
Well, what if, if somebody wants to do that, then contact Melly.
Okay. I didn't, I said I have no idea.
And the same amount of load, so.
Yeah.
Definitely. Yeah, why not?
Alright.
No issue with that. We use Mecklen's right now because they're the cheapest we can find, and they're always there when we need them.
Well, I said I had no idea. I said I'd ask.
Yeah, I mean, somebody, yeah.
Well, they were just worried because they're. You know, they, they'd like the opportunity, I guess, to sell it. I don't know. I didn't really realize it was an issue, so told them I'd ask, so I did my part.
I have, I have something, um, there is a service at Cummings this weekend, so I don't know if Johnson's has started his.
Had a meeting with him today.
Okay, um, just wanted to make sure it's in decent shape.
I can give him a call. This, I'm sorry, what day?
It's the thirteen. So this is Saturday.
Been out, she's been out a moment and planning on, I've gotta take some dirt and control.
I just wanted to throw it out there because someone requested that I ask because.
I did that already, but.
Yeah, um, I'm gonna go down with the backhoe and see if I can mix it up a little bit, because I've got a lot of vegetation growing in it now, so.
I've burnt some of it out.
Oh, did you?
Yep.
Well, then.
I have one thing, uh, talking to Miller the other day, we, we have. Uh, several of the obstructions out of the road, Millie's been getting a little backlash when she's talked to people. I think it'd be worthwhile to. Spend a little bit of money illegally and just get an opinion on from our attorney what we can and can't do about cutting back overgrowth on the. This, it, an obstacle, an obstruction to traffic by the visibility. So we, we're not resolving it internally. I think we should get a legal opinion. What are our options?
Okay.
Does what specific area that?
There, there's a couple places that we have had trouble, um, probably shouldn't bring that name to the table, but. There's two or three places. Um, I did talk to a landowner this past week and was able to. Get them to take down part of the bush, but they're refusing to take down the whole thing, which is really blocking the way, but. My. If, if, I, I have yet to get over there to see what that did for the view, but um I'm hoping that it opened it up a little better.
What kind of bushes that?
Something that flowers.
I don't know. I don't know what you're talking about.
Okay.
But I still think we ought to get a legal understanding of what we can and cannot do in these instances.
Is that something we can ask? Um.
Main municipal legal, I can start there and see.
Okay.
Well, F I C was doing a bunch of planning this year, and I know they had some issues with some property owners, thought they went a little bit too far, and they said. They had, they knew what, right? They knew what they could do, but I mean, so if there's a utility line that goes over it also, maybe you could fall under.
Well, the, the, the issue as I see it is. That the rules, as I read them, say that you, you do have a certain route away and you can remove obstructions. But it also has these talks about ornamental bushes. You know, so is that, I mean, if, if there's just a bunch of alders on the side of the road, it's one thing. If somebody's got a, a, a obvious planting of Rosa rugosa's. Do I have the right, just because somebody says that's an obstruction, I can't see around it, do I have the right to remove that ornamental bush? That's the question, and according to what I read, I don't.
I want a legal opinion on it.
And is it just for the main road, like the end of? Public streets, or can it be the end of people's driveway and something is obstructing to get onto the main road?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, you think if we have a driveway, and you're just checking your view, we could.
But it's not my problem.
We can't. Really do much with, according to municipal handbook. It would be a good, good to know what we can do.
Yeah.
Because there are places that are.
I don't think it's set cut and dry, but.
I don't think it is either. That's why.
In my experience.
Be with Dawn on legal advice on it.
I mean, is there, is there like, you can't, if you have an ornamental bush, it can only be six feet high or four feet high.
Well, I mean.
I'm set back from.
Right, there mu- there must be some kind of a guideline that someone should ask.
It typically, it's typically spelled out.
The only thing that, the only thing it does lay out is that the engineers will have ditch on them. We don't have ditches in the, in the places. And we really don't need them, otherwise I'd go dead.
Well. If there was an ornamental bush tree, whatever it is on someone's private property. If they don't wanna cut it down, and then an accident happens because of that, are they liable for it? I mean, that's another question, right?
Question too.
Like. The town wouldn't be right because we weren't allowed to take it down, so then that property owner would.
I know that in the winter, anything that is like a, a vehicle or a basketball who, or stones or something like that that are set. Within a certain amount on the side of the road, in the winter, they're considered a um fixed deadly object.
Yeah.
So if fire hits them, or, or a snow pile hits them, same for me, it's like a mailbox and a lens, but they're, they follow a little differently.
Yeah.
Um, that the property owners are liable, so.
Right.
That's why we try. If we see somebody building a, a little stone. Abutment on the side of their, on the edge of their property, we try to just nip it in the bud, because if you let it go and it stays there for a number of years. Then you can't do anything about it.
So you should just plow it over the first one till they put it up there?
No, you should ask the homeowner to move it according to this statute.
I, I still think that. I mean, I'm not a lawyer, so I'm probably way off base, but I feel like if, if you as a property owner put something up that is clearly obstructing. Traffic and an accident occurs, you would be liable. So as a property owner, if the town's telling me, you know what, this is an obstruction, I would probably think to take it down, but that's.
Not, not all, see, not.
Clearly not, clearly not, but they might find themselves in legal trouble later on, and then it's too late, but.
We just need to where we stand.
No, yeah, that's, that's fine. Let's, let's.
There must be plenty of precedent upon these things.
I would think so.
Roundup works good.
Please not, let's not get that into our water system.
Okay, so over um around the. On High Street, when you go around that corner, we got a tree that was bending over into the road, clearly an obstruction. It was a, it was a small birch, so it was, it was a. Not a very big tree, but you know how birches sometimes, they get caught in the wind, so it was out into the road. Well, of course, the, I said, oh, yeah, take it, take it out. We gotta get that out of there. Clear obstruction, right? The homeowner was pissed. We took their tree. They wanted the wood back.
That doesn't surprise me at all, because I know exactly who you're talking about.
So, you know, you just never know. You think you're doing the right thing, you think you're helping, you think you're getting things out of the way. And people are still upset.
I wonder what they would have thought when the tree fell on someone's vehicle and they sued them because it was something improper.
This is why we need more problems there and just put them off, off the road, because I don't wanna.
Get into that.
Right.
Yep. All right, anything else from members?
I just wanna, um, reminder of Memorial Day, cracking lot cleanup.
Don't you worry.
I know we've got a ways to go yet, but.
We must have. We must have another meeting just before.
Twenty, two weeks from today.
Twenty third.
Yep.
And has those lights doing down on them? Dana's down there working. Go ahead and do it.
Yeah, I have it in here already.
That's what I was thinking. He's gonna have a lift.
Yeah, good.
He can change her down.
All right. If there's nothing else.
You did notice that they're starting the old fire hall too.
Yes.
Just notice that.
Yep.
We're painting down there.
Yeah.
Now I don't believe my.
I will adjourn.
Second.
All is a favor. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.